Call this meeting of the Morley City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Hans. If you'll please call the roll.
Lucas.
Here.
Kimmons.
Here.
McEwen.
Here.
Graff.
Here.
Scubic.
Here.
Thank you. You've all seen before you tonight's agenda. Are there any corrections or additions for the agenda this evening? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Shall move.
Second.
We've got a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Tonight's agenda has been approved as presented. Approval of the minutes for January 8th, 2025 city council meeting. Are there any corrections for these minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Shall move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion or the minutes stand approved as written. Thank you. We'll skip right down to the to the green card. If there's anybody that would like to address the council, please come to the clerk. Fill out a green card with your name and address. You'll have four minutes to address the council. We'll call you up at the appropriate time later on in the in the meeting. We'll let you do that at that time. So don't see anyone in the crowd now. So if anybody comes in, we might let them know that grab a card from the clerk. Mr. Bogowski, recognition of visitors, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we are joined by Amanda Schultz and Mercedes Kendall of Williams Keepers. These are our auditors, our leaders of the audit team, and they have a presentation for the council tonight.
Very good. Thank you, you guys. Come on up. Good to see you again. I don't think it's on.
I don't think that's on.
Don't ask us about IT. Well, good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Amanda Schultz. I'm an audit partner at Williams Keepers in Columbia, and this is Mercedes Kendall. She's one of our supervisors, and she was in charge of the city's audit again this year. So like we've done the last few years, we're going to be presenting our summary report, which hits the highlights of the individual reports that we issued as a result of our audit. So the first report is the annual financial report or the audited financial statements, and this contains the city's annual financial statements for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2024, along with our report on those financial statements. In our report, which is really the only part of the audited financial statements that is our responsibility as your independent auditors, we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements, which means that in our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting that's utilized by the city. Management is ultimately responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. Consistent with prior years, it is common for us as independent auditors to actually prepare our clients' financial statements, assuming that they are capable of being reviewed and approved and accepted by management as their representation of the entity's financial statements. We use our judgment determining how to audit the city again this year, although we've been working with you all for a number of years. During the planning phase of our audit, we perform a risk assessment process where we look at your controls, processes, obviously determine if anything has changed from prior years, and also look at balances and transactions so that we can really narrow our procedures down on areas where the financial statements could be misstated. So I always like to kind of give that reminder that that essentially means in planning this, that we don't audit every balance or every transaction, but we do enough work in order to be able to give that unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. As part of our audit, we also evaluated the appropriateness of accounting policies, the reasonableness of significant accounting estimates, and the overall financial statement presentation. So I mentioned that the city's financial statements are prepared using the modified cash basis of accounting. So because of that, the city's basic financial statements include fund financial statements and notes to the financial statements. If the city were to use a different basis of accounting, there would surprisingly be more statements and more disclosures included in these reports. But everything is included that is required for you all under that basis of accounting. On page two of the summary report, there is a table that summarizes the highlights from the city's governmental funds financial statements as of and for the years ended June 30th, 2024, with comparative information for 2023. Those actual statements can be found on pages four and five in the annual financial report. Just a few highlights. Total assets increased by 1.3 million for the city during fiscal year 2024. That's primarily due to inter-fund receivables. And just a reminder, this is the governmental fund summary right now. So there were increases in receivables from the proprietary funds or the utility funds of the city. And there was also an increase in tax collections, so that increased your cash balance during fiscal year 2024. Total liabilities increased by 623,000. That's due to an increase in inter-fund payables from those governmental funds to those proprietary funds, so due to borrowing back and forth between between the funds. And as a result, total fund balances, or essentially the equity with the net position in each fund in total for governmental activities, increased by 720,000. So think of that as a net income essentially for the city's governmental funds for the last fiscal year. There is a breakdown of that net income per se in the next table that summarizes on page two of the summary report. Total revenues were stable for the year. They increased by about 4%. Total expenditures, though, did increase by 2.7 million, primarily due to the timing of grant finance projects. So you all had received some revenue in prior years for grant funding, and then in the current year, a lot of that funding was was spent. So expenses are up this year. The revenues would have been up last year, so just a timing difference related to the the grants activity there. And then total other financing uses were stable. They just decreased by about $1,000. On the next page, we have similar tables that summarize the highlights from the proprietary funds financial statements, essentially the city's utility funds, and those statements are on pages six and seven. Again, at a high level, total assets decreased by a little over $500,000. That is due to a decrease in restricted investments, and those investments in those funds specifically are restricted for debt service. So as you're making debt service payments, and they're coming out of those investment accounts, the investment account balances are going to decrease, and that's on the sewer system refunding revenue bonds. Total liabilities were stable, and the net position for your proprietary funds decreased by about $500,000. So that's essentially a net loss for your utility funds during the year. And the next table, just like on the previous page, summarizes the income statement for those proprietary funds. Total revenues and expenses, at least from an operating perspective, are relatively stable in those proprietary funds during fiscal year 24. There was an increase in your non-operating revenues due to a variety of factors of about $250,000. So a lot of that runs through just a miscellaneous revenue line item. Because the city had expenditures of federal awards that exceeded $750,000 during the fiscal year, you all were required, excuse me, to have a single audit performed again this year. The city had federal expenditures of close to $3 million for the programs that are listed in the CIFA, the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, and that's on page six in the audited financial statements. We issued two additional reports as a result of the single audit. There is a report on internal control and compliance related to financial reporting, and it reported no material weaknesses and no instances of non-compliance. That's on pages 41 and 42, so that's a clean letter. We're still not giving an opinion on internal control, which Mercedes will comment a little bit more on in just a minute. But based on the procedures we've performed on the single audit, there were no issues identified with internal control, but still no opinion given. And then the second report is on internal control and compliance related to major federal programs, and that had an unmodified or a clean opinion on compliance and no findings. That's on pages 43 through 45. So I feel like I went through that fairly quickly, maybe a little too high level. If you have questions now, I'd be happy to entertain them. Otherwise, we can circle back to questions at the end of the summary report.
I had a question on your topic of override of controls, but you say she's going to talk about that?
Yeah, we'll get there in just a minute.
Okay, then I'll save that. I'll save that question.
Okay, perfect. Well, I will go ahead and turn it over to Mercedes then.
Thank you.
Okay, so you should also have two letters included in your packet, and the first one we're going to go over is the auditor's communication letter. So this letter includes comments about the audit process that were required by our professional standards to communicate to the governing board of an auditee. So for the city, this council serves that role. We've also included several highlights of that letter below. So first, we noted no transactions that we considered both unusual and significant related to the application of accounting policies. We evaluated the estimates affecting the financial statements and found them reasonable in relation to the financial statements as a whole. We evaluated the disclosures in the financial statements and found them to be neutral, consistent, and clear, and that all required disclosures to support the financial statements are included. We found the accounting records to be in good order. We did propose a few audit adjustments as a result of our procedures, and we do include a detailed summary of those adjustments as an attachment to the auditor's communication letter. It'll be the last page of that letter in your packet. And then we had no disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues and had no difficulties performing our audit, and we felt that we received full cooperation from all of the city staff that we worked with throughout the process. The second letter that you should have is the management letter. This letter is used to communicate any findings we may have about the city's internal controls and certain other matters that, in our opinion, are significant enough to warrant your attention. Although the scope of our audit engagement was not directed towards an opinion on the adequacy of internal control, we considered internal control as a basis for designing our audit procedures. A deficiency in internal control exists when the design or operation of a control does not allow management or employees in the normal course of performing their assigned functions to prevent or detect and correct misstatements on a timely basis. A material weakness is a deficiency or group of deficiencies in internal control such that there is reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the entity's financial statements will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be a material weakness. Included as the last page of your management letter, you will see that we included a few recommendations that we believe are opportunities for the city to enhance its internal control, even though it didn't reach that threshold to be considered a material weakness. So two new in the current year are related to bank reconciliations and the city's purchasing policy. And then we also have continuing recommendations related to information technology and inter-fund balances. And we're happy to answer your questions now, or we can review that attachment in detail if you were, if that was part of your question.
Are the the inter-fund balances, are they being repaid on a timely manner? Is that is that what you guys are seeing? Or is this happening because there's a cash flow problem that we're essentially not seeing, I mean, from our perspective?
We can't really comment on the cash flow issue. That's likely what we see when funds borrow from each other, especially when you have a pooled cash system. But to your first point of the first part of your question, these balances are just continuing to increase or build up because the funds aren't paying each other back.
Right, okay.
Or transfers, yeah, aren't being made between the funds.
And then the other question that I had on the uncorrected cash misstatement of the 166,580, is that, is there a threshold? I noticed that you don't go back and fix that due to lots of different reasons. But is there a threshold for which you do? And do you set that threshold? Do we set that threshold internally? How does that actually work when you look at it from the audit perspective?
So we primarily set that threshold internally. We have internal calculations that we perform that give us different thresholds, some of which allow us to pass on adjustments like these, but still be able to give a clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements without that adjustment being made. This one is one that really the city just needed more time to dig into the difference and correct. So this doesn't indicate that, you know, cash is truly misstated or that cash is missing by that amount, but it is just an unreconciled difference likely due to the change in accounting systems that the city went through recently. So, yeah, the accounting and financial reporting team plans to, during this current fiscal year, dig into that difference and resolve it. There's likely just some transactions that need to be cleaned up in the new system.
Okay. I think that's all the questions that I have. Personally, does anyone, does anyone else have any other questions for the auditors? No?
We do have one more short report to go.
Yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off. Keep going.
No, that's okay.
We love numbers around here.
That's okay. So the last item in your packet that you should have is the report for MIRMA, and this document contains the city's schedule of payroll reportable to MIRMA. That report is on a calendar year, and so those numbers are as of December 31st, 2023, along with our report on the schedule, and we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion on that schedule as well.
Very good, very good.
No questions or comments from the council?
No additional. Thank you, guys, for the hard work and effort that you've put into this. We appreciate it very much.
Yeah, thank you all. It's always great working with you. If you have any questions after this evening's meeting, please let Allison know now. She knows how to get ahold of us, but we appreciate your time this evening, and see you next time.
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Next up on the agenda, we've got our consent agenda. It looks like it includes items three through five. These items are considered routine and will be adopted with a single vote. Is there any council member that would wish to remove any of the consent agenda items for separate discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the reading of the consent agenda?
Shall move.
A motion by Mr. Kimmons. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First and only reading, please.
Bill number R 1767, a resolution authorizing a lease termination agreement and approving a new lease agreement with respect to lots one through six of the Omar Bradley Airport, first edition, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and the lease. Bill number R 1768, a resolution approving a termination agreement with Energy Solutions Professionals LLC and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. And bill R 1769, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a prescribed burning agreement with Timmerman Wildland Fire Service LLC.
Thank you. Anyone on the council have any further discussion regarding items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Shall move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Now, consider ordinances and resolutions. Number six, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance extending the imposition of a sales tax. I ask that it be read twice for consideration by title only.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance extending the imposition of a sales tax pursuant to the provisions of section 94.700 through 94.755, RSMO 1996, as amended for transportation purposes on the receipts from the sale at retail of all tangible personal property or taxable services at retail within the city of Morley at the rate of one-half of 1% if such property and services are subject to taxation by the state of Missouri under the provisions of sections 144.010 through 144.525, RSMO 1996, and providing for submission of this ordinance to the qualified voters of said city at the general municipal election called and to be held in said city on the eighth day of April, 2025.
Thank you. Long one. Any additional discussion regarding ord number six? And we just want to make clear, I think Mr. Scubic asked this question last meeting, but this is, just to make clear to the public, that this is only allowing us for a potential tax renewal for the transportation. Second reading, please.
An ordinance extending the imposition of a sales tax pursuant to the provisions of section 94.700 through 94.755, RSMO 1996, as amended for transportation purposes on the receipts from sale at retail of all tangible personal property or taxable services at retail within the city of Morley at the rate of one-half of 1% if such property and services are subject to taxation by the state of Missouri under the provisions of sections 144.010 through 144.525, RSMO 1996, and providing for submission of this ordinance to the qualified voters of said city at the general municipal election called and to be held in said city on the eighth day of April, 2025.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? Do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
Shall move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubic.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number seven, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance authorizing a streetscape cooperative agreement with the Cristo Center and the Downtown Morley Community Improvement District, and I ask that it be read once for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in seconded. All those in favor signify by aye. All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a streetscape cooperative agreement with Cristo Center and the Downtown Morley Community Improvement District.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a streetscape cooperative agreement with Cristo Center and the Downtown Morley Community Improvement District.
Thank you. Last chance. Any further discussion or questions? Do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
Shall move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubic.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number eight, a resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Morley, Missouri, to pay expenses due between December 31st, 2024, and January 15th, 2025, in the amount of $1,017,792.17. I ask that it be read once for the consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First and only reading, please.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Morley, Missouri, to pay expenses due between December 31st, 2024, and January 15th, 2025, in the amount of $1,017,792.17.
Thank you. And I hereby certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Morley, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution, to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Allison Boyd. Any further comments or questions from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
Shall move.
Move, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution has been approved. Okay, moving down to official reports. I think we've got a few questions. Just for those that don't know, we do ask the department heads to submit a report for the last month of different things that are happening within their organization or within their group. It gives the council a chance to kind of get caught up on on what's happening and a chance to ask some questions if 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 they so desire. So anybody want to? So, anybody want to lead that off? Mr. Kimmens?
Yes, I have one for Mr. Sanders. Tom, would you refresh me on how a temporary water on works? And what, what the?
The construction permit?
Yeah.
For temporary water, I, it's kind of a split amongst departments. So, I mean, that's, you know, they would initially go to the water office over there for that. We've been working with them and we're trying to get that set up so that, it's thirty days when they come in and apply for it. If they meet the requirements, they get thirty days of water. And so, we're trying to get that set up so that they come over to the code office and they would review the situation to see if they are still in construction or, you know, if it's like for cleanup or maybe a rental property or something like that that, uh, it's not, they're not moving people in and occupying the facility. So, it's kind of being revised right now, but it was set up originally for that purpose, for like construction or cleanup for like thirty-day usage. And then to roll over, either be shut off or roll over into permanent service if the house was completed and ready for occupancy.
Well, my concern was that it seemed like there was mention in your notes there that it had, some had gone on for years and others, uh, people had moved into the property, they were living in the property and no notification to us, I guess. So, that's, you're working on getting that parts where the right?
Yes, it, it kind of involves multiple departments. So, we have, the code office has been working with water office and department, their department heads. And so, we have a meeting actually set up, I think later on this month. We're gonna, kind of got like a flow chart, how that could work out. Want to make sure that we all understand the problems that each department faces and, and just kind of send them to each other and walk through that process and then try to get a better solution.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmens, anyone else have any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for Tom.
Yep.
Tom, some time ago, we talked about forming a committee about looking at city occupancies and any potential changes or things we can make there. How's that coming along?
We have five people who identified on that that would participate on that committee. And I asked our, my assistant to get a meeting set up on that. So, I, I need to see what they have got scheduled on that, but it's five people committed to that.
Awesome, thank you.
When, when would you look to enact that, soon? I mean, then the next?
As soon as they can meet.
Good.
So, and I thought we would just kind of go over it and we've got like a, a mix of like some Realtor property managers, former landlords that had multiple properties. And there's a, there's a health department, I think, I, I have to go back through the list, but five people that have different perspectives, but very involved in the process.
Good. I did have one for finance and the health trust balance that's currently there. Obviously, we're down to two ninety-two, nine fifty-five, which is, you know, getting a little lower than what we like to be. Are we waiting, is this, is this a steady balance or are we waiting for, for a lot of payments to come in for reimbursements? I didn't see that in the report.
I don't know if I know the specific answer to that question at this point. I do know that there were some reinsurance amounts that we were waiting on to still come through. We did see one of those beginning of January. But I believe we are still waiting on a little bit of that that will offset some of the expense from December.
Okay. Yeah, if you could, if you could check on that, that, that would work. Appreciate that. And then I had one for parks, which parks is not here. But also, I'll ask you, Mr. Bogowski, will there be a financial report coming for the skating rink, big setup that we do over there? I think the council would probably like to see, see the numbers on that and see just kind of how all that worked out.
Yeah, last I talked to Mr. Bach, he was assembling that, so I will remind him of that. We'll get that put together.
Very good.
I have one for Tom.
Yes, Ms. Graff?
I have, Tom, I have a question regarding the downtown parking study that was done, I think this spring or summer. Can you tell us where that is now and what the next steps are?
Walker Consultants completed initial study that was an overview from an aerial photo of GIS. And so, the document they provided had like a, basically a line graph on there that said, you know, these should be this, these should be that. But it didn't have a depiction of what you would see or how many spaces that were there and how many we would end up with. So, it really wasn't a, a good visual representation for most people. We could put something together and construct that. But as we started looking into it on the fourth street block and also on the, uh, coat street block there by the corner grill, that area right there, where we're, we're identified as the highest probability areas. We looked at some areas that we could find some savings by revising some driveway approaches to the street. And so, we applied for a TEEP grant through MODOT to do a review of that parking study.
Remind me what TEEP stands for?
Transportation and Engineering Assistance Program. And so, they're going to take the information from that parking study, basically, and put that into a document that can be easily visualized, easy to bid out, and also incorporate some of the areas where we have property owners that were agreeable with revising their approaches that would be able to allow for more parking on the street and still not, you know, impact negatively their businesses.
What would you say your, uh, goal timeframe is? To actually?
Waiting right now for, to get the, we were hoping to have the engineer, our contract back from MODOT by this point. So, I had asked MODOT connection on that, where we were at. And I haven't seen a response here the last couple of days. So, I would expect to get that agreement with MODOT here sometime yet in January. When we get a contract with Bartlett West to get that started, I'd say you're probably looking at three months to get that finished up, the study. And then based on that, if you were agreeable, uh, we move something forward on that, a plan on that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any, any other questions? I had one more and then a, a statement. Actually, that was for, I think for you, Tom. We do completely own these towers over here now, correct? That's all, is that all completely done and through? Where's the revenue for the antennas that are on top of them now going?
They're, they've been, power's been cut off.
Oh, so they're not even being used?
No, so, once, once they changed ownership, in fact, there was a one church group that retained towers up there and they wanted to keep that going. But we didn't want to hook up the, it was a very minimal amount of money. We did not want to put the power back on and have that. So, they're all just, there's no power.
Okay, okay, that answers that question. And then the other one just had to do with nine-one-one, it's not even a question, but I noticed that, uh, we'll be moving over Arcad and, um, uh, the fire department a lot sooner than what we expected. So, that's, I would just say, good job. Because I, there's, we've been working on this for, for a long, long time and that seems like a very short period to make this happen. So, I'm just saying, good job. You don't have to come up and tell us anything. Okay, no other questions for department head, monthly reports. All right, we will move on. Thank you, everybody, and again, thank you for taking the time to fill those out. Very helpful. Additional items to come before the council, number ten, consideration for approval of a new liquor license.
Mayor and council, we've received a liquor application from Kyle Sims with That's Fire Barbecue LLC that will be located at four hundred West Reed Street. That application has gone through our required processes and we recommend that you approve the license.
Very good. Be good to see another, another restaurant come into town, it's great. Anybody like to make a motion for the approval of the liquor license for That's Fire Barbecue?
Shall move.
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye. All opposed? Liquor license has been approved. Number eleven. Consideration appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we discussed this at work session at the last meeting. There is an opening on planning and zoning. And we had three applications on file and the council discussed moving forward Bob Riley. So, if that is still the will of the council, we could have a, a motion and appoint him to that body.
Do we have a motion to, for the approval of Mr. Riley to the Plan and Zoning Commission?
Shall move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, all those in favor signify by aye. All opposed?
Is, that's for an unexpired term, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, number twelve, consideration to appoint Josh Barrett to the Board of Adjustment to complete the unexpired term of Tom Hall expiring December two thousand and twenty-five.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is cleaning up a clerical error of the last meeting. So, we had appointed Mr. Barrett to fill a term of Tom Hall's. But the resolution that was brought through said that it was a five-year term. It is actually completing an unexpired term of Tom Hall that ends December of two thousand and twenty-five. So, this is correcting that action and clarifying that it is, he is being appointed for, through December of two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion for the approval of Mr. Barrett to fulfill this term through twenty, December two thousand and twenty-five?
Shall move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All opposed? Mr. Barrett has been approved to be on the Board of Adjustment. Public comments, any additional comments that anyone else would like to make? Don't see any unfamiliar faces, so we'll move on. Any of the, any other council member want to bring up, uh, any other subjects you'd like to discuss? Okay, hearing none, I consider a motion to adjourn to a work session followed by a closed session to discuss the status of negotiated contract matters.
Shall move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmens? McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Skubik?
Yes.
Thank you, we are adjourned from the normal city council meeting. Appreciate everybody for coming. I will move directly into our work session. Got quite a few items on the list for this evening. So, we'll go ahead and roll right through. Number one, consideration of an appointment to the Tourism Advisory Council.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, with Councilman Skubik's, um, position on the council, he was formerly filling the role representing the Chamber of Commerce on the Tourism Advisory Board. So, the chamber board has nominated Bronson Cribs to take his place and that would be at your, uh, subject to your approval.
Any discussion regarding Mr. Cribs being appointed to the Tourism Council to replace our own Mr. Skubik? Any objection to moving it forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move that one forward. Uh, number two, request for proposal for preparation of the environmental report for a fire station and training tower.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we published an RFP to garner contractors to perform an environmental review of the site where the fire station is being built. The primary purpose of this review is a historical record of the site. Any potential conflicts with, um, Native American tribes that may have had, um, a presence on the site would be notified and allowed to present their, um, to present about the site. In addition to that, any, you know, jurisdictional waterways or anything like that. So, it's a envi- true environmental review of the site and its historical purpose.
And this is required based on our grant responsibilities, correct?
And we received, uh, one proposal from Mark Twain, Regional Council of Governments.
Okay, very good. Any questions, further discussion? Any objection to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward to the next council meeting for approval. Number three, request for qualifications for consultant services to provide professional services for the development of phase-two bid permit construction.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we published an RFQ, uh, request for qualifications for the phase-two construction services on both the ci- potential city hall remodel and the dispatch center build-out. So, RFQs are a little bit different, we don't do them all the time around here. What they do allow for is a lot of flexibility for the city to negotiate with the selected contractor to say, these are the specific services we want. So, what an RFQ does is assesses the qualifications of people interested in bidding on the project. And then the city would actually select one and negotiate directly with them for a scope of services. So, instead of publishing an RFP and you kind of get the entire kitchen sink, these are all the services that are included, you can kind of pick and choose in an RFQ and get a slimmer product. And with these buildings, we do have, um, certain drawings already. So, we have an as-built, we have an HVAC plan, we have some of the documents already that would be needed in a traditional build-out process. So, this allows us to do a, a smaller project directly with somebody.
And just to make clear, by going this process, we are not bound to continue on if we are unhappy or prices don't appear to be where?
So, the council would select the consultant and of which we had two proposals, uh, two qualifications submitted on this that they would like to work with. We would sit down and negotiate with that consultant and a price would be agreed upon. And then that would be presented to the council if they wish to move forward at that point. But we would not be any, under any obligation to do so. And if we could not come to an agreement with the one, you can always go back to the second one, too.
So, okay, okay. Any further questions regarding the explanation of the RFQ? Any objection to moving it forward to the next council meeting, Mr.?
Are we choosing someone at this, to move forward at this point, you know?
It would probably be in the interest of the council to select who you wish to move forward with at this point.
Oh. That wasn't communicated very clearly. Does, does the city have a preference on, on who they recommend?
Due to his familiarity with local building codes and contractors, uh, we would recommend Mr. Snodgrass's qualifications.
Okay. I know Mr. Snodgrass is local, is the other one local as well?
No, it's a, uh, architecture firm from St. Louis.
Okay. Beans, Mr. Snodgrass is local. I would personally rather go with the, the local gentleman. Beans, it's also the recommendation from staff. Does anybody have any comments or anything they'd like to add or questions?
I'd agree with that.
Agree with that? Any objections? Everybody good with moving it forward? Okay, so we will move it forward to the next council meeting, um, with Mr. Snodgrass as the choice. Okay, number four, MODOT Traffic Enforcement Application Council Authorization.
So, each year we do this, we're a little earlier than usual. Commander Hayes has taken over this with Sergeant Boggs leaving, going to the Sheriff's Department. She took over this, uh, the MODOT Safety Grant Authorization. So, she's on the ball and got the project started earlier. The grant runs from, um, June to the following, so, or from, excuse me, July to the following June is when it runs. So, we're well ahead of that. Usually, we get anywhere from twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars and it's for DWI saturation traffic enforcement grant. The form that's part of the package is required by MODOT before we apply that the city council has been made aware of it and they approve us applying for that application. The second part of this that I found out after the council agenda was done is that part of our mobile ticketing grant is also tied into the same form. Somehow or another, the state of Missouri decided that that form that says traffic enforcement, which I meant we're stopping cars for various traffic enforcement activities, they said the same form is going to be used for the, um, the, uh, the electronic digital printing portion of that. They said we don't have to come back a second time, but it's going to be used for both of those applications. She just finished, uh, going to the training on the mobile ticketing. So, that will be coming forward, um, as we get the, some prices. But you guys have already approved us to apply for the grant, so she's in the grant completion process now on that.
Okay. Okay, any questions for chief regarding the grant? Hearing none, any objections to moving that forward to the next council meeting? Thank you, chief. Number five, special tax bill for demolished property at seven eighteen West Reed Street.
This is a little bit older bill that's been done for a while. So, we just need to get it on the tax bill, or put the tax bill applied to the property. So, bringing it forward at this time.
Okay. Any questions regarding, uh, this particular one? And then I have a question kind of about this. Anybody have any objections to moving this forward? No. On the structured demolition debris budget, I know we budgeted about two hundred thousand dollars for, uh, destruction, basically, on, on a lot of the infill housing and whatnot. And I noticed that we were, still have a hundred and seventy-three thousand left. So, do we plan to use all of that up between now and?
If, if possible, so, we, we've had the hearings, we've went back to the process and so, we've had, uh, hearings where they're, they've came in and met with them and, and they're, they're going through a process right now where, uh, a hearing officer reviews those, makes their recommendation and Randall writes the reports. And we've got some things we need to clean up that they found on some of those and some of them have, I think, a little additional time. So, I think we have around till March. Should be the most. So, around March is when that time expires. So, from that, after that, we can get bids and move that forward. So, hopefully, I can get that. and move that forward. So hopefully I can get that turned around quickly enough and still get it out. This is years fiscal year. Our fiscal year ends June, mid-June. So it's gonna be really tight. So I'm gonna try to have bids done before that ex- time expires, so that we can move it forward faster.
Well, I, I know we were, I think everybody was kind of in agreement that we, that we wanted to try to expend all this money on, on tearing down houses.
Absolutely.
And so I, I guess my question is why, why is it taking so long, I guess?
I can address some of that from, from my perspective. Um there's due process we have to get through because we're taking people's property. So notices that are required under our code and by state statute require time. Um for the properties that were the property owners showed up, uh they were all interested in rehabbing the property and thinking that they could meet our requirements on the code. Uh so, uh in the interest of equity and treating them fairly, those orders did give them more than thirty days to do that. We have to give them thirty days to meet the, the consent order. So we'll have to monitor those very closely, those four, to make sure that they are doing something. You know, one of the gentlemen, I didn't, I wasn't aware, he was the owner of the property. He showed up, he bought it online. He found out from the realtor that it was um a dangerous building, and he showed up and he had a whole plan for uh rehabbing it. Unfortunately, he didn't have financing, so in that instance, we're requiring him to show us that he has financing, that he's hired a contractor. So we're going through those steps on, on those four.
Right.
The, the other properties, I think there were eleven total properties that we had hearings on that day. No one showed up uh on those. But then, and on those properties, I have to review to see did we actually give notice. Uh because oftentimes there are absentee landowners, we can't find the landowner, we have to give notice. And if we don't give personal notice, we have to do it by publication. So that's what Tom is referring to, is I'm referring, reviewing all those files to see if we've done that, or if there's anything more we need to do. So we are working through it.
Sure. And, and I was under the impression that, that we had been deeded several properties already that were just basically waiting in line, and if, that's not correct, then?
We have a, a few.
So why, why can't we go ahead and knock those down and get rolling?
Well, the unit price in, gets a lot less expensive if you have a bigger batch. You know, paying a contractor to come to town and tear down three houses, you're gonna pay some number.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Bring them for fifteen, it's some lesser number.
Yeah. Well, and it just, I just want to make sure we're staying on top of, because that's been such a value. You're now starting to see the benefits of all of these homes. You know, you drive down Concanon, and you see so many benefits of what we've done with the infill housing. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were gonna use this, these funds that we'd put in place.
Nobody would like to tear them down faster than me.
I get it, a hundred percent. Anybody else have anything to add to that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So back to the property owner, what kind of timeframe are they allowed? Is, is that set by us to, to, to give them a date that says I have to have this work done?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
So, so that process could drag out potentially for a while, I guess, if.
Well, uh we've issued the orders in those. I, I think the guy who wants to refinance, we gave him sixty days to come up with financing and a construction plan. And if he doesn't do that, then the order provides that we can demolish.
Okay.
But also keep in mind that anytime we enter an administrative order like that, it can be appealed to the circuit court, just like the Mobley Inn. I don't anticipate that's gonna happen in this instance, but it could. So there are things that can get in the way of us proceeding with the demolition.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for answering those questions. Um we did say we're gonna move that forward, correct? Uh number six, special tax bill for mowing and cleanup charges at the property at eight twenty-four West Coat Street.
So we've actually since demolished, you know, and there was, uh, we had his, you could see the dates on there, that they're back in the twenties, the top twenty-four. So we did mowings on them, and we just wanted to put that on there and apply that. So we were, that's one of the ones we're looking at doing a foreclosure on, so we might as well add all the costs in there along with the demolition cost. I think demolition cost was around twenty-two thousand dollars. So, yeah, so it's, it's a big bill, but might as well throw it all in the pile, in the mix while we're doing it.
Okay. Any other questions regarding uh the special tax bill for number six? Any objection to moving that one forward? Okay, we'll move that one forward to the next council meeting. Thank you. Number seven, a lease termination agreement and approving a new lease agreement with Mid-Missouri Aviation in respect to Omar Bradley Airport, second edition, Lot One, Mobley, Missouri, said tract continuing point-two-three acres, more or less, and a consent to assignment of the lease to County Bank.
So this is the, one of the new hangars you see out closest to the highway. There was two of them constructed here in the last few years. It's been changed a lot, and so uh this one, this is the one from County Bank, I'm sorry. I've got too many hangars going on right now.
Right.
This is actually the older hangar that's over on the old Aviator Lane off that taxiway over there that was, is a gray and blue hangar. It was constructed by Edge Aviation several years ago, and he sold it to the current owner, and that guy's now selling it back to his wife's corporation's name. So Rin Johanniver's actually purchasing it back, and they got a loan on it. So this is the same format. So if the purchaser now defaults, the lien transfers to the bank that's holding the lien, not the property.
Okay.
So that they would own the lease.
Okay.
We've done that a few times now.
Okay. Any questions for Tom regarding number seven? Any objection to moving this one forward? Okay, we'll move that one forward to the next, next city council meeting. Number eight, industrial park change orders number four and number five.
Yes, we have a change order from ESS on this project. Um basically, we had identified two portions of one on each McEwen and Fowler Drives where closer to the tie-in or at the tie-in points of the new streets, the concrete was cracked and substandard. So we took out a couple panels on each one and re- re-poured the, had those re-poured. So that, that came up to seventeen thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-five cents for those, for those two concrete patches at the tie-in points. And then we have uh some signage updates that were, that weren't planned in the initial project, just to put new street signage out there. For the industrial park, and that came to four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars for a total of twenty-two thousand, one hundred thirty-three and forty-five cents total for the two change orders.
And this, this change order, this is ultimately being paid for by money that was already allocated um by the money we saved. We discussed several meetings ago, correct? So it's not additional, not additional funds? Okay.
Dropped at about a quarter of a million, and now we're going back up a little bit.
There you go. Okay, any additional questions for Mr. Steve? Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward. Uh number nine, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the bid of DMC Concrete LLC for the removal and replacement of the rear approach apron at Station One.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The rear apron at the Station One Fire Station's been a problem for years. Uh this is a budgeted item that was passed this year to replace that. Uh we have an on-call uh unit price bid with DMC Concrete. Um so he had put in a bid for us based on that unit price that's bid citywide. Um to do some due diligence, a lot of times we'll just get a, an additional bid to make sure, you know, it's competitive. It was in this case, so um Septagon was there doing something else, so the chief had him put to get bid together. Um but it's very rare um in time that the low bid is not Mr. McCormick, because it's all based upon our, our, our citywide build-out list. But we do get other bids for larger projects, just to make sure everything's going well, so.
I just want to make sure that, you know, with the new fire station that's coming in and potential for either some kind of renovation or change at the police station and, and whatnot, if, if that were ever to take effect, we're not doing this and gonna end up having to tear this out for whatever reason in a couple of years, correct?
I can't see how we would. Um just the way this is laid out, I ca- I can't see how this would interfere.
Okay.
I guess I, I can't a hundred percent guarantee that. I just, I struggle to envision that with the site the way it is. So there are some problems back there that I think, you know, Tom and I looked at it. The alleyway probably needs to be replaced there. It's caused some runoff issues, which has probably made some of these problems worse. So Tom is adding it to the uh replacement next year to replace that alleyway, as well as part of our citywide repaving program. So that coupled with replacing this apron, it should be a very durable solution back there.
Thank you. Any questions? Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward. Uh number ten, capital improvement plan, budget amendment.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay, what you have before you is a budget amendment for, amendment for the utilities, capital improvement plan for the current fiscal year. Uh there were three things we wanted to accomplish with this. Uh one was relocate some major items that would be better funded under like a state revolving fund versus the city's capital budget. Uh secondly, we wanted to show and reflect what's been done year-to-date so far. And then thirdly, we rearranged some of the, the future years as well. So to make it, I mean, as we reviewed this, Michael and I and Allison, when she came on board, had several meetings, uh talked through this to make this make more sense. I'm not sure if I'm saying that well, but you, you get the big picture. Uh so the bottom line is, what was approved for the current fiscal year was nine hundred and forty-five thousand. And where we landed after the movement was nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, so about twenty grand less than what was approved originally. And what caused that movement was, again, the bigger items that were moved out from under this budget to a different funding source like SRF loans. Uh any questions so far? Okay, there's one, one item that's on here that was not on here at the original passage of this budget. Uh under the distribution and collection budget, you'll see a valve exercising machine? Anybody know what that is, for starters? No? Okay, well, glad you asked. So we're, we're, I'm trying to move the utility department in a direction of preventive maintenance versus corrective, right?
Yeah.
I'm trying to get away from everything's an emergency to let's do a routine practice that prevents emergencies. That way, when we do these budget processes, we make an accurate budget, and then we execute. That's, that's the goal. So I've got a picture, if you're interested, I'd like to share with you all. Just wanted you to get a, a little visual about what this thing looks like. Michael and I had been talking about it for a while, and he said at some point, I don't even know what this thing looks like. So uh we talked some more. I got a visual for you all to actually see. The utility staff has observed a demo unit that looks very similar to what you have in front of you. So this, the, the purpose of this is best practice in a distribution system is to exercise all the water main valves in the system annually. Currently, we exercise valves when we have a main break. So you can imagine in a system this size, we have a lot of valves that maybe haven't been touched since they were installed ten, twenty, thirty, fifty years ago. So we want to get into a best practice, uh and this goes back to that preventive versus reactive maintenance. So.
So when you go to turn off water downtown, the wrong building doesn't get turned off, basically, because the, all of the valves are correctly working?
Yes. In a nutshell, yes. Uh what happens, and this has happened just since I've been here, you have uh, you want to shut off a certain outage area to address a problem. If the valves you want to close do not operate, you have to extend the outage area and see where that could be a problem. So we, and this, this isn't gonna make us the model system overnight. It's gonna take, it's gonna take a while. But I'm excited for this. I mean, this is kind of like routine surgery I keep talking about with the staff every week. So this is another movement toward that big picture prevention. Over the long term, it's gonna save nothing operating costs.
Yeah, yeah.
Sean, does this mean that the guys won't be able to go out on nights like this and work on breaks and that sort of? We hope so, right?
Yeah, we're still on breaks, of course, with the, especially with freedom dog and droughts and summer.
Now, I, I, I love the out-of-the-box thinking, and I, you know, obviously, you're, you're thinking of, of uh proactive instead of reactive, and I think that's the only way we get to where we're trying to go. So I, I think it's a great idea. Um anybody else have any comments or, or questions, or anything they'd like to add? Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward for approval at the next council meeting. My head here. Number t- number eleven, receipt of proposals for the wastewater treatment plant floor replacement project.
Uh yeah, we're proposing a fund view to, to, to build a filter to replace the floor in the wastewater treatment plant. Uh this is in the laboratory building, where they have the offices, the lab, bathroom, uh, locker room, things like that. Uh the floor that's currently in there is approximately twenty years old. It's being like industrial vinyl type. And in an environment like that, it's worn badly. So the new floors are, before you're gonna be an epoxy or commercial type floor, that's been pulled up much better.
Is this one of those projects that's been kind of kicked down the road for a while? Am I correct? I think I've heard that. Okay. Okay, any questions? Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this one forward to the next council meeting. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Um that's it. That's all we've got. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye. All opposed? We are adjourned from work session. Thank you, everybody, for coming and participating this evening.